Yeah, I don't do technology.
I have 6:30.
Okay, then. Let's call this meeting of the Plastow Zoning Board of Adjustment to order. This today's date is Thursday, July 30th, 2020. Dee, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Peter Beelow?
I'm here.
Are you? Anybody with you?
I'm fully remote. I am by myself, although through the course of the meeting, I'm sure my wife will walk through the kitchen and back.
Dan Lloyd?
I'm here by myself.
And you're remote?
And I'm remote.
John Blinn is excused. Jonathan Gifford?
I am here. I am remote and I am alone.
Thank you. Gary Ingham?
I am here. I'm remote and I am in a place where what else will be?
Jim Unger?
I am here. I'm remote and I'm also alone.
Thank you.
Jim, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Once we stand.
My pledge allegiance. Republic. Which stands?
What stands?
Indivisible.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Well, we don't make a good chorus, but it's okay. Okay, and before we get going, I'm appointing Jim Unger, our newest alternate as a voting member for this evening. Okay, Dee, would you call the first case, please?
Sure. Case number 20-16, a request from Nicole Preventer for a variance from Article 5, Section 22032IA to permit a 10-foot-by-12-foot storage shed to be placed six feet from the side property line where 25 feet is the minimum allowed. The property is located at 33 Forest Street, Tax Map 49, Lot 5, in the LDR District. The property owners of record are Nicole Preventer and Justin Lemieux. Nicole, we're gonna put you, gonna put your mic on. Can you unmute yourself on your end, please? And turn off whatever's in your background. Nicole, are you there? Nicole, are you there? Oh, are you on a phone or? Are you there? Yeah, your audio was horrible. Can't hear you at all. Can you try calling in on a phone? Nicole, we're gonna put you off later in the meeting and hope we can resolve your technical difficulties. We'll move on to the next one and come back to you.
Okay, I hope she heard that. Okay. So we're going on to the next case?
Okay.
Okay.
Ready for me to read it?
Pardon me?
Are you ready for me to read it?
I am.
Okay. Case number 20-17, a request from Richard and Sanaz Anthony for an administrative appeal of the June 17th, 2020 Planning Board Decision on Application 19-06 Milton Real Properties of Massachusetts LLC relating to Article 2, Section 220-2, Article 5, Section 220-28, Tables 220-32A and 22032B. The subject properties for the planning board matter are 19, for planning board matter, 1906, 143 Plasto Road, Tax Map 30, Lot 73, and 145A Plasto Road, Tax Map 30, Lot 72, in the Commercial One District. The property owner of record is Milton Real Properties of Massachusetts LLC.
Thank you very much. Now, before we enter a public hearing on this, I think the zoning board needs to discuss some procedural, some procedural issues with this application. First, before we decide whether to go into a hearing or not. I think there's, as I read through the filing, I think there's a couple, there's a couple of issues with this request. The first is that the zoning determination by Mike Dorman was made on February 2nd, 2019, so it's been over a year and a quarter since then.
Six.
We have 20 days from when the zoning officer made his determination to when someone could file an appeal. It's only a 20-day window, not a month or a year plus. Now, the planning board accepted the, I'm sorry, what?
I believe that you said that the zoning determination was February 2nd. I believe it is February 6th.
I'm sorry, you're right, February 6th. Secondly, the planning board accepted the application as complete on March 2nd of 2019. And again, there was no appeal within 20 days of that. We're still well over a year beyond. The planning board gave a conditional approval on June 19th of 2019, and again, with no appeal to the ZBA within 20 days. So we're so we're well beyond the date that's that are, that we allow appeals. And then finally, when the Anthony's attorney, or the Anthony's filed paperwork, this paperwork to hold a hearing, they mistakenly sent only one copy to the ZBA. No service was provided to the planning board, which is required by New Hampshire RSA 676:5. So the planning board was never notified of this appropriately. I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that we can't hear this, this case for those reasons. It's late and way late, and the application was made incorrectly. Do any of you folks out there have any thoughts?
I agree.
I agree.
John?
I agree.
I agree.
Well, then why don't, why don't we make a motion on this? Dan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move that the appeal of the administrative decision of the Plastow Planning Board filed by Richard and Sanaz Anthony is both untimely, and that service to the planning board was not made as required by New Hampshire RSA 67:5, and therefore denies the Plastow Zoning Board of Adjustment jurisdiction over the appeal application.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
And with one correction, it was, it's RSA 676:5?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. You guys ready to vote, or do we need to discuss it further?
I'm good to vote.
Dee, would you call the, call the vote?
Peter Beelow? Peter Beelow?
Um, hold on a second. Yes, it is untimely and yeah, definitely.
Dan Lloyd?
Ah, yes.
Jonathan Gifford?
Yes.
Gary Ingham?
Yes.
Jim Unger?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chair, I've got a note for the record. Oh, no, I thought I saw a hand raised, but I no longer see one.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't be taking any comments from the public.
Kind of, I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Okay, and I just want to make a comment for the record that we wouldn't be taking comments from, from anyone because we did not open a public hearing. Okay.
We want to try Nicole again?
Is she, is she on?
She's still there. Let's see if we can try her again. Hold on. Nicole, can you hear us? Nicole? I'm sorry, Nicole. It's coming through like you're.
Nicole? Hold on, Dee. Nicole? If you could try, try turning down the volume, whatever you're listening with, I'm wondering if that might help. So try saying something, Nicole.
No.
More than one device asked in that room?
Nicole, do you have more than one device on in the room that could possibly be caught in the interference? Just muted her microphone. Nicole, you might want to try also, there's a, if you go to the town's website, there's a phone number that you can call in on a cell phone, and you would, would be able to talk to us. So why don't you give that a shot, and we'll come back to you. We haven't given up on you yet.
We're not gonna give up on this one.
We still can't hear you. I'm like a chipmunk underwater. All right, I've put it. Would you like me to read the next one, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Request number 20-18, a request from Angela Fazon for a special exception under Article 10, all sections to allow a home occupation, namely a one-chair beauty salon. The property is located at 5 Farrington Ave, Tax Map 52, Lot 50, in the LDR District. The property owner is, the applicant is the property owner of record.
Okay.
And let me find Angela a list here. Angela, can you unmute your microphone, please?
Yeah, hi, everyone. And Dee, hopefully you guys didn't hear me okay. Thanks for setting this up. You've been great throughout the whole process, so. Yep.
Okay, so. So Angela, if you would, kind of walk us through what you're, what you'd like to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, so I am a nail technician, and what I'd like to do is just have a, I guess, a one-table or one-chair nail studio in my house. I want to do everything the right way so that I can actually do family and friends' nails at my home and be able to accept payment and officially set up the business. So I'll probably have maybe three clients a week. That's my goal, so something, something small.
Okay, and see. So you own, you own the home, right?
Yes.
Okay, and according to the application we have, you're saying the, the amount of space used for the salon will be about 8% of the, of the, of the living space, which is well under the 25% allowed?
Uh, yeah, I didn't do the calculation, but if it's 120 square feet, it's equivalent to 8%, then that would be correct.
8%, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So you're, so that's, that's, that's good that way, and it's inside the house. Yeah, strangely, or I shouldn't say strangely, but the way the, the way our zoning reads is home occupation actually has to be in the home. You can't actually use, if you had a heated shed, you couldn't use, in theory, you couldn't use a heated shed. It's gotta be in the house. And you're, and you're good with that?
And that's a great idea. That's, I would love to have a he shed or a she shed, whether they call them, but um, yes, it's in my house.
Okay, but one thing we let's see, I'm not gonna go through all of the all of the various crafts and such in, that we allow in, in home occupations, but a one-chair beauty salon is, is, it clearly qualifies under personal service. You're not gonna be storing anything noxious in the house, I hope?
No.
Not, not causing smells that people will perceive on their properties? Not causing electrical fluctuations that will screw up your neighbor's TV?
Not intentionally, no.
There you go. I'm just kind of going down the list. I'm not, I'm not picking on you. And you, you won't have commercial vehicles on the property for this?
No, no.
Okay. Little question, do you have, do you have sufficient parking?
Uh, yes.
She did submit a picture late this afternoon for parking. I wasn't able to get it loaded onto my computer.
Okay. Okay, actually, I think we have a picture for you this.
Yeah, it looks like the driveway.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, look, yeah, a car driveway is sufficient for, for something, for a business generating three customers a week, I would say. Does, does any of the other board members have questions about this?
Is there any appointment for signage or anything?
Um, I did not fill out, so I do have the paperwork filled out, but I did not submit it until I got approved. But I, I will do that. I guess the rule is no bigger than three by three. Make sure it's clearly marked.
Angela, it's three square feet, not three by three, so it would be something like one by three or 18 inches by two feet.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thanks for clarifying.
And not, not internally lit?
What was that, Dee there?
Not internally lit, so not, not when these signs that glow at night.
Oh, all right.
Which you probably wouldn't want in front of your house anyhow.
Yeah, I'll make sure not to light up the street.
Thank you. Nothing else from the board?
I just have, I have a a simple question. Are your, are your chemicals that you're using neutralized prior to hitting the septic system?
Um, so most of the stuff that I use is stuff that you would find in any medicine cabinet. So alcohol, acetone, nail polish remover, so there's nothing really. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Concern ourselves, so I'm just making sure that that was discussed.
Okay.
Yeah, normally, at least, I actually get into many nail salons in my job, and normally all of the solvent wastes, they actually keep in a covered can, and very little of that, or, and none of it should be going down a drain because your acetones and your alcohols are all flammable, so you have to watch out how much you keep on hand as well. Some nail salons buy like a little pint, and they use it that way. I run into nail salons with five-gallon drums that can blow up a house. So you really want to be careful of what you have for acetone and alcohol because they're both flammable.
Okay.
Gary?
No, but it's pretty straightforward from what I've been reading, so no questions.
Okay. Um, Dee, is there anybody interested in speaking in favor of this?
Give me a second to look here.
I'm not seeing any letters, either in paper or against.
No, I don't, I didn't receive anything by email.
Okay, no attendees raising their hands to speak in favor?
No, no at all on this matter, no?
Okay, then is there anybody speaking against, raising their hand to speak against?
I have nothing.
Okay, um, any final comments, gentlemen?
No.
Angela, you have anything, anything else to say?
Uh, no, I just appreciate you guys making this process pretty straightforward, so I've never attended one of these, so I wasn't sure what to expect. But very much appreciate it, and Dee was great, so thank you for hearing me and starting up these meetings after everything we've all been through.
Well, I'll be brutally honest, this is only our second remote meeting like this as well. Although, although professionally, I think some of us attend a lot of these things during the day, you know, for our businesses or whatever hobbies, in my case. Okay, so that being said, I'm gonna call this, this hearing to a close. Angela, so you know, we're gonna go into deliberative session where we can't take any more inputs from anyone, and we'll be taking a vote on, on this matter in probably about five minutes. You're welcome to stay and listen to it, of course. Do be aware that no matter how we vote, it can be appealed for rehearing within the next 30 days, so please don't do anything within the next 30 days. Although I will say that that's a very rare occurrence. And Dee will officially notify you within 10 days, 10 days?
Five.
Five days.
Five, wow.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Good, no problem.
Yeah, the notification of this decision will be within five days, but it'll take 30 days before you can get your permit from the Department of Building Safety.
Okay, is that a, should, should everything be approved? Is that, do I need to do something additional for that? Is that automatic?
I would suggest that you check with Joyce in 30 days. I will forward her a copy of this decision, but she has to wait it out for 30 days. But due to the fact that we're all kind of a little scattered right now, do yourself a favor and check with her in 30 days.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you so much again, appreciate it.
All right, I'm gonna, your microphone, don't take it personal.
Okay, so we're in deliberatives. This seems to be a pretty straightforward case of a personal care.
Excuse me, sir, could I have a motion?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, who will make a motion, please?
I will.
Okay.
I moved, I moved to grant the request from Angela Fazon for a home occupation under Title 10, all sections to allow a one-chair beauty salon at 5 Farrington Ave, Tax Map 52, Lot 50.
Thank you.
Jonathan?
Thank you.
Okay, this seems to be a pretty classic straight-up application, well within the size. It's a very light, very light footprint, if you will. This business, a very, very light footprint, without expecting, you know, three or four customers a week only. I said four because I hope, I'm hoping that she's so good, she'll expand just a little bit. And no, there's, there's not a lot of storage of ugly, ugly chemicals or things like that. There's not scaffolding that we see in some cases and commercial vehicles and I, I don't see any reason to vote against this.
No.
Gentlemen, if you have any other comments?
I'm good to vote.
I'm good.
I'm good.
You know.
So I overestimated when I said five minutes in deliberative, okay?
Do you like me to call the roll?
I would.
Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
Don Gifford?
Yes.
Gary Ingham?
Yes.
Jim Unger?
Yes.
Peter Beelow?
Yes. Okay, good luck, Angela.
Let's give Nicole another try and see how we're doing.
Okay.
Nicole, can you unmute your mic? Hi. Hello? Now we're getting nothing. Nicole? Nicole?
Dee, let's go on with the next application, and we'll get, and then we'll go back to Nicole after that one, okay?
Okay.
We'll get there, Nicole, somehow. I'm hoping.
Case number 20-19, a request from Donald L. and Marlene G. Watts for a variance from Article 5, Section 22032IA to permit an addition to an existing garage to be built eight feet from the side property line where 25 feet is the minimum allowed. The property is located at 24 Herron Road, Tax Map 50, Lot 74, in the LDR District. The applicants are the property owners of record. Mr. Watts, could you please unmute your microphone on your end?
Hello, Mr. Watt, are you there, or Mrs. Watt?
He's still on self-mute. Mr. Watt, could you please unmute your microphone? There you are.
You hear me now?
Yes. Do you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Are you, is Ms. Watts with you as well?
Yes, she is. She's here. Marlene, my wife, is right here.
Thank you.
Okay, would you please give us kind of an overview of what you'd like to do?
Okay, we have an existing garage now, two-car garage, which is perpendicular to the lot line, eight feet away. What I would like to do was to put a, an addition on the back of that garage, 22 feet wide, to house two additional cars. These are show cars, and we, we more or less put them in there for storage. They would be there for storage. The the wall of the, the proposed garage would also be eight feet and would be perpendicular to the lot line on that side.
So you're now intruding more, closer, you're intruding along more of that setback?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have the overview for that?
Yep, hold on just a second, sorry.
Seems like a lot of water for Plasto.
That's the old Plasto.
Water, yeah, the old Plasto.
Thank you.
I work cheap, guys, so be nice.
Okay. So I guess it's 50-74?
Yes.
It's the one outlined in blue.
Yeah, yes.
Just remember, Dee, 10% of males, and all five of us are males, are colorblind, so chances are relatively good that one of us can't tell the red from the blue. Okay, and I see that the septic is in front of and to the right of. Okay, and I see that the septic is in front of and to the right of the house, so there was no possibility of doing anything on that side.
Correct. Because we'd also have to put a driveway in if we did it on the right side of the house, which would probably go over the leach field.
Right, and that's, yeah, that's a bad thing.
Yes.
Basically, the existing garage is always already on that line, eight feet off. You're just extending back.
Correct.
And you're using the garage entrances.
In, in back of your house, is that hill going up or is it going down? I think it's going down.
Correct.
Um, probably, it gradually goes down at that, the back. Of where the proposed garage would go. Would be a little bit of fill, but not a whole bunch. It's not as steep as the right side of the hill in the back, which goes down dramatically. But as I said, where the proposed garage would go, it's not that steep. Right.
Will we, will you be using your existing garage as the entrance and exit for the back garage?
Yes.
There will be no more garage doors on the side or the back?
No.
Okay.
There may be, I may be put a little door on the side to put my riding lawnmower in. From the back on the side of it, but it's only a small, a small door, just enough to fit the lawnmower tractor.
But there'll be no, there'll be no vehicles going around on any.
No, no more driveways out the back sides anywhere.
Okay.
Walking through the preventative.
No. Just a quick question, being, being the new guy here, I noticed that his plan says 22 feet deep, maybe 24 feet deep. Do we care?
Yeah, I haven't decided whether that extra couple of feet, really haven't designed up the garage per se, you know, a form.
Well, I think, I think, I think when we. When we make a motion and deliberate, we should, I think, use the larger of those two dimensions.
Okay.
All right, in which, in which case, if you build smaller, that's okay.
Okay.
If we give you 22 feet. And at the end of the day, you decide, oh, drat, I really want 24 feet, then you'd have to come back to us.
Yeah, so.
So let's pick up 24 feet and if you shorten it up, that's fine.
Okay, all right. It'd be 22 feet wide also. The same as the existing garage.
Right, but that's a hard number. You're not looking at, yeah, okay.
Correct, correct, yes.
Would 24 feet be the max, though?
Yes, yes, it would. It would be.
Okay.
Okay, um. So, Mr. Watts, I guess we need to kind of walk through the criteria to agree on a variance. So I don't know if you spoke with Dee very much about this, or you know much about this process, but in order to grant variance. All, all five criteria. You know, have to be, we have to agree that all five criteria are met. Not four, not three, not a majority, all five. So let's, let's kind of go down them, and if you were just going to read your responses to each of them. So number one, the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest.
Oh, am I supposed to?
Please, please.
Yeah, I don't have the answer right here.
Either, why don't you read?
I'll, I'll just do it, okay. So the, the, the proposed new structure is behind the existing garage and only partly exposed to viewing from the street. Turned spirited intent of the ordinance is preserved because the proposed new structure is behind. Existing garage and only partially exposed to viewing from the street and therefore will not be unsightly. Three, there's a substantial justice in granting the variance because. The proposed new structure is behind the existing garage and only partly exposed to viewing from the street. Four, the values of the surrounding properties won't be diminished because the proposed structures. And behind the existing structure and will not be unsightly. Five, literal. Enforcement of the provision. Provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because. No, no unnecessary hardship. We'll have to discuss these during our deliberations. Do you, do you folks have any other questions or comments?
The only comment is, is, as it states, we would put it behind the other garage and really, you really can't see it all that well, you know?
What about?
I guess I have a question. And that's that the roof line, is it going to be any taller than the original?
No, it will not be any taller, no. I may, I may, I may make the roof a little less steep, but within code.
So if, if we were not, if we were not to grant this. This variance, I assume you'd have to keep your two show cars outside or under a temporary, you know, one of those quants of hot looking tent things?
Well, right now, no, not a tent thing. One, right now I have one out back covered. And the other one is in the right bay of the existing garage, and my wife leaves her car outside. Of course, I have my.
I've never been able to make that work. My car's still outside.
That's never happened. I don't.
Well, well, the thing is, is it's her, it's her Corvette that goes in the garage, so.
Oh, okay.
As opposed to a Mitsubishi, so.
Sorry. Um, any other questions, guys?
No, I can't think of any. It would be nice if you could grant this. Right now, we have to bring the cars to a storage facility that is very expensive at this point for the winter. Type of thing, and this is kind of why we wanted to put that garage in.
That's your unnecessary part.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's expensive, the storm for the winter. And that's about it.
Okay. Dee, is there anybody interested in speaking in favor of this? Dee?
I don't have anybody with a hand raised for in favor.
Okay, do we have anybody speaking against this?
I don't have any hand raised, but I do have an email.
Would you read it, please?
This is from Athena, and I'm never going to be able to pronounce her last name, and I don't want to mess it up and insult her, so, but it's. A T H A N A S A T O S. And she lives at 22 Harriman Road. And.
Probably Lot 50,73?
It's opposite of Mankill Brook, so yes.
Yeah.
My concerns are as follows. Number one, although the proposed new structure may only be partially exposed to viewing from the street, it will be fully visible and extremely close to my property line. Eight feet in perens, an existing structure. Therefore, it will be unsightly from my property, but more importantly, will have a negative effect on my property value. Number two, as my property is located downhill from 24 Harriman Road. And I am concerned that the disruption of natural grading may cause drainage issues along with possible flooding and erosion of my property. Ms. Athena is present here tonight, so I'm going to unmute her microphone and see if she has anything else she'd like to add. Oh, you need to, on your end.
Dee, which house lot is hers again? 5073?
Hold on, I need to look at it.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
Ms. Athena, can you unmute your microphone on your end, please? Unless you have nothing else to say. There you are. Can you hear us?
I can.
There you go. Have anything else you wanted to add to the email?
No, that is my only concerns, but thank you for asking.
So, what, so we don't have the topography or topography map for this, for these lots? Does, how does that hill go down? I mean, is it pretty much back? Does it go down towards? The back of both of these lots, or is it tipped more to the left or more to the right?
And Athena, you need to unmute your microphone again so you'll be able to answer.
So, um, my name's Nicole, I'm her daughter. The property line is.
Nicole, is it same last name?
Oh, I'm sorry, De Cristofaro. So the property line itself, or I'm not sure exactly where the property line is, but right around where the tree line is, where the property line is. Is actually a downgrade. She's on, she's on the downslope coming from. Um, 24 Harriman Road, and there's, like, if you went out, you would actually have to walk up the hill. In, along the property line to get into the next property lot for 24 Harriman Road.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. So if, so, Mr., let me ask Mr. Watts a question. If. If, if you, if we were to grant this, could you put gutters on that garage to discourage water from flowing off? The sides towards your, your neighbor's property?
Yes, I could. The existing garage at this point, there's no, the water drains off it, but there is no run, running down that grade. At this point, I mean, there's none, even with, you know, real hard rainfall, it never runs down that grade. It just soaks right into the ground, and that's it. Yeah, but I can put gutters, that's not a problem.
Okay. So, I apologize, I didn't write down the, the butter's daughter's name.
Athena?
Or what?
Nicole.
Nicole, thank you, I apologize. Have you folks seen any kind of runoff from this, from the existing garage?
No, no runoff from the existing garage. However, it looks like, and, and of course, we don't know exactly, but it looks like. Where, where it's going to come back, where the, it may be. The way it's set, and if everything's disturbed. At that point, where does the water that maybe like it absorbs there, where does that water go? As it comes down the grade, it's just, I mean, it's not a steep grade, but it's a substantial grade that. Just raises some concerns.
Okay. Okay, um, if we were to. If we were to mandate that if the structure gets built, that gutters are put on, on the. The edges of, you know, of the garage roof. And with downspouts going, going away through your property, would that help alleviate your concerns?
So I think when we were, when we were looking at it, um, I think what our concern was. Was, is it something that we're going to have to have a retaining wall for in the future? That was more of not just, I mean, rain runoff gutters. That's not an issue. I, I think just because of the way it was set up and where the, where the structure is going to be placed. Yeah, or is my mom going to need to, to put a retaining wall there just because of the way it's going to be placed? The other, the front part of the garage as it stands. Is there, is there without issue, and you can, you can clearly see that there's not an issue, but what happens? If something comes about in the future where now the, now the grade is starting to erode, and then what?
Okay, I, I understand. Of course, if we keep, if we keep water from entering that area between the houses or towards your mother's house. That, that'll remove the possibility of, of erosion. You need water to have erosion.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm not, that's certainly not my, my forte to know these things, but it was just a. It, it was a concern, and if trees are coming down, which we don't know if they are or not, if trees are coming down, will that? Will that make a difference in the grading, in erosion, and that sort of thing?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mr. Watts, other than any trees directly in back of that existing garage, do you plan on taping down any trees?
Yes, there's one pine tree and a couple of the smaller trees. The pine tree is probably more like 15 feet from the lot line. And that, that grade right there, it's going to be the same grade, and nothing's going to change. With the grade whatsoever, it's going to be the same. And as for the, the. The downhill there that they were speaking of, that's been. That's been. Never finished. It was like it was dug out, this is like the 20 years we've been here, it's like that downgrade is, has been dug out. And it has never been finished, and it really has never eroded there whatsoever. I mean, you can see the bare soil. You can see roots of the trees coming out of that, but. It's never eroded any since we've been here for 20 years. There hasn't been no erosion whatsoever.
Okay. Okay. Board members, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Watts, you were saying that the grade behind the existing garage is fairly flat, so you won't even have to fill for the new garage?
No, we'll have to fill a little bit to bring up, to put in the foundation.
What, you had to guesstimate like a little bit?
To smooth it out.
Like a foot of fill or something?
Yeah, probably. As, as I said, it's not a real steep grade in the back on that side. We may just, just fill it in just enough just to grade it to make it smooth looking. There may have to be some. After the foundation is put in, the foundation perimeter as well within it will just be filled with dirt or whatever they put in there gravel. And that's it.
Right.
I have a question, Watts.
Go ahead.
If, I'm just looking at the top, topography, if, is the eight foot from the property line at the front of the current garage right now, is that where you're getting the eight feet?
I'm getting it from the back corner, left.
Okay, but now as you, as you extend it in the back, it almost looks like that garage is at somewhat of an angle. Away from the property line, so would the finished product be more than eight feet from the existing property line or the same?
It, it may be, because it, the property line is.
Yeah, it seems like, yeah, that, well, that's what I was getting at, so I didn't know if maybe when it was done, that would actually be further away from the property line than the existing structure.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of going by, it seemed like the wall of the existing garage, it seemed to be parallel with. The lot line, because there is a, a lot line stake right at the front of the garage, and I know it goes outward. From that point on, but I, it would not be any less than eight feet, it would be probably more, if anything.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was getting at, it, it almost looks like at the end, it would be further away from the property line than the existing.
Yes, yes, I think so.
Yeah, okay.
I was doing this case by, by stating the eight feet at that.
Right, nope, nope, I got you.
Mr. Watts, earlier you said something about land that's been untouched for 20 years. Is that on your side of the line or their side of the line?
That's on their side. Their side.
So really, what you're doing wouldn't have any effect on that piece of land?
No, none whatsoever, and it's never changed the, any of that grading. Over the years.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, folks? Okay, well, with this, um. I'm about to close this hearing, and we'll be going into deliberative session. Again, folks, that means you're, you're welcome to stay on and listen. We can't take any more testimony from, from anyone. And we'll be coming up with. With a ruling tonight. I don't, Mr. Watts, did you hear, did you hear my comments of the lady doing the nail salon? About you gotta give it 30 days before you do anything. D will officially let you know within five though?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I see. I'm gonna go through the whole litany again.
And like I explained to Angela, you probably would want to check with the Department of Building Safety in about 30 days, just to make sure that they get your permit ready.
Okay.
If it's granted, yes.
If it's granted, yes. Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I'm calling this hearing to a close. Entering deliberative, I'd like to, I know it's unusual, but it is legal. I wanna read the, propose a motion. And that is, I move to grant the request from Donald and Marlene Watts for a variance from Article 5, 220-32 IIA to allow an addition, to allow in a 24-foot deep addition to an existing garage to be built within eight feet from the side property line. The subject property is located at 24 Harriman Road, tax map 50 lot 74.
Did you want to add a condition about the gutters?
Oh, yes. And that it, yes, and that on at least the side facing lot 50 dash 73. Yeah, that too. That there'd be gutters, gutter put up on, on, on the garage. And the downspout would be, would, would, would not be aimed at all to the butter's property. It'd be straight back or to the right a little bit. Do we have a second?
Okay, I was, I was looking down and writing. Who was the second?
John was the second on that. John and Gary both did it within nanoseconds of each other.
So that means I get to pick. Great.
Okay. Well, what do you folks, what are your folks thinking?
Well, personally, I mean, it, like, again, it's gonna run right along the boundary line, if not even a little bit further away from the boundary line. It's gonna be the same design. It's the garage, it's already there. I don't see why not. It's, I don't see any substantial injustices or anything. It'll make the house worth more money, so that's not hurting the property value. So it won't be diminished. I, I don't have a problem.
Okay, well, why don't we go down the variance criteria and discuss them? Proposed variance won't be contrary to the public interest. Well, I guess I'd say it's no more contrary to the public interest than the existing garage, which is also eight feet from that, that board, that boundary, extending it back another 22 to 24 feet. I don't see that makes it contrary to the public interest.
Well, seeing that the neighbor is also the public and it's gonna extend 24 feet per vision of the garage. You know, I mean, that's, it's quite a, quite a stretch of, of your back property. They're only eight feet away and that building only looks like it's another four feet from the property line. Why they built these two houses as close as they could, probably top of gravity they had to. But that, that's quite an extension for a neighbor that close.
Okay. True. The spirit and intent of the ordinance is preserved. Well, it's not clear to me it is preserved. That is another 24 feet, 22 to 24 feet of, of intrusion into pretty good, you know, pretty strong intrusion into the side setback.
I mean, just so I get a visual, what was there? I don't have any, their, their original is 24, right? But they're doubling the length of that garage.
Right.
That will bring it. Well, almost past the line of sight from the back of their house. Obviously, it's looking into the neighbor's yard, but you, you know what I'm saying?
I do.
You're, you're taking up a lot of volume of their, their, their view, which essentially prior to this is just the woods.
Yeah, the view with yard.
Pardon me?
I'm envisioning the front of their house is where that walkway goes to.
Correct.
So their back view is viewing his property. It's just the way their house was positioned. If their house was positioned differently, they wouldn't be looking at his property.
Right. That's true.
Yeah, it's kind of a weird angle.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. See, you got, you, they're looking at all his property, which is his property.
I mean, hindsight, I mean, if he wanted to, he could put four Quonson huts back there in his yard if he wanted to.
Right.
Or he could shorten his driveway and put the addition in front. And now then, that doesn't, I doubt that would matter where they would hide it all.
I mean, it would get even closer to the sideline if we went frontwards by, at least by the way these lines look.
Exactly. It seems like the further back he goes, the further away from the property line he goes.
Right.
Yeah, that's true. But generally, there's not many, many, if any, windows on the side of a house that looks that way. And he'd still be able to, by the way, have enough setback from Harriman Road. Cause he's, he's got a, well, right now he's got 90 feet, roughly 90 feet of setback to the front of that garage. So putting something, another 24 in front of it, he'd still end up at 60 feet of frontage, or 60 feet, you know, of front setback.
I just, I don't know, aesthetically, I just trying to visualize what that would look like.
Yeah, having that stick off the front to me.
Yeah, it just, to me, that's not something I.
Yeah.
Well, by God, we're not, we're not here to.
No, no, I understand, but I mean, you, you, you know, like I say, we're, we're here to discuss, you know, the backside. I don't know.
I mean, obviously, the house next door, if, if these property lines are correct, which these aerials are just a proximity of approximate of a property line, the house next door is awfully close. But do we penalize him because that house is close?
I mean, it's, it almost looks like their house, that house is built just as close as the attic, if, if not closer to the property.
So then we, you know, do we penalize him because their house is even closer? I, I, my, I don't see it, as long as he took care of the runoff issues. Because, you know, obviously, having extra runoff, if they have a downward slope towards them, could cause an issue. To me, if he took care of the runoff issues, I think going off the back is the best aesthetic way to do it on that lot.
Let's go down to the rest of the criteria here. There's substantial justice in granting the variance because, and note, any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice.
Well, I think the general public doesn't have an issue. Only one neighbor would have an issue. There's three line there. The visual aspect is only approached by one neighbor.
Nonetheless, the, the neighbor is part of the general public.
I understand.
And already, is, and this board in the past, and again, I'm not trying to stand on precedent because it isn't any. But generally speaking, we tend to allow garages in some unusual situations like this from a feeling that people really need a garage. But there already is one, and it's just really a doubling of the area of that, of that garage. So I guess I'm less, personally, I'm less comfortable with, that there is substantial justice in granting this. So that's just me. I'm not trying to put words in people's mouths. Let's go down to the next one. The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. Now, that's an awful lot, lot more building that they're gonna see next door.
Right. But like you said, he also has the ability to build it towards the front. So if they're living next door to an odd-looking building, what does that do to their property?
Well, actually, they, no, by not granting this doesn't mean he gets to build in front. It doesn't mean that's another variance request.
Right, yeah.
And that might not fly. I, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Well, you had mentioned about the front before. That's why I was bringing it up.
And the last one, literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. Well, in unnecessary hardship, there's something unique in the land, unique in the property. You know, it's, the storage fees, you know, aren't really considered and is a hardship. Although it's someone who, whose son has a couple old vehicles, I can understand why that would be an issue.
I know, if you drive up Harriman, probably four or five houses past that, there's a, there's a home. And in front of that home, there's two Quonson huts right next door to we, to each other at the same hall. I would much rather have something in the back than something in the front yard. I mean, you know, theoretically, yeah, he could, he could put a Quonson hut right there in front of the garage and park. I, I wouldn't, I, I'm just trying to pick the lesser two evils. I just, I think that would diminish the property more so than eventually a garage that, you know, is gonna, you'll get used to the structure. It's not, it's, it's not gonna, you know what I mean? It's not gonna get ratty looking. It's not gonna have holes in it. It's, it's gonna eventually just be part of the landscape like the original home.
Permanent structure.
Yeah, that's just, that's just mine.
But, but on the other hand, we're supposed to, I mean, one, one comment, Gary, then right over to you. We're supposed to be looking at the variance criteria, not really what we'd rather have.
No, but I'm, I'm going by the, if you go by diminishing the, the property values, I mean, you know, like I say, you, you drive around town, you see these Quonson huts popping up everywhere. And, you know, it's just, you know, I've had one, but it's been off to where nobody can see it. I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't want them off from my neighborhood. I mean, I think that diminishes the, the property values more so than a permanent structure would.
If you look at the picture that he included in packets, it's a much more detailed picture than the one we're looking at on the screen right here. And if you can just kind of look at the size of his garage and put it, another thing the same size in the back, you're really not cutting off a view from the house next door. Yeah, they're gonna see it, but it's not like you're cutting off their view, because the house next door is at a different angle.
Right, it's looking far beyond that garage. They'd have to, if they were in their backyard, they'd have to look for that garage to see it. I see what you're saying.
And it looks like there's a goodly amount of trees along that property line.
And he said the only tree he was taking down was the pine towards the back, but not, like, right behind the garage currently.
Just wanted to point that out, that this picture makes, you can look at it in a different way versus the one she has on the screen.
Okay.
Get more detail.
Just different perspective, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, this is an interesting and difficult, frankly, difficult case for me. You, you folks ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, Dee, why don't you call the vote?
Jonathan Gifford?
No.
Gary Ingham?
Yes.
Jim Unger?
Yes.
Peter Bielow?
No.
Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
Your vote is 3, 2, 0, and the motion passes.
To all those viewing out there, see, we don't all agree on everything. But unlike maybe some other boards in, in some other towns, we're all still good about it.
And we got Nicole back?
I think we have Nicole by phone. I'm just trying to find her application again real quick here. Hold on. Fingers crossed. Nicole, are you there?
Yes.
Yes!
Do you need me to read it again, or are we still all set here?
Uh, let's read it again to refresh our memories. And before you go, Dee, I just wanna say, Nicole, thank you very much for hanging in there with us. These are trying times. I'm, I'm glad we were able to make this happen.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Case number 20-16, a request from Nicole Preventer for a variance from Article 5, Section 220, 32 IA to permit a 10-foot by 12-foot storage shed to be placed six feet from the side property line, where 25 feet is the minimum allowed. The property is located at 33 Forest Street, tax map 49 lot 5 in the LDR District. The property owners are record and Nicole Preventer and Justin Lemieux.
Okay, Nicole, so could you give us kind of an overview on what you're planning? And Dee, could you put up, could you put up the, the drawing? Okay.
Uh, so our plan is to put the 10 by 12 shed kind of tucked into the woodland area, so though it'll be obstructed by a tree and behind it will be more trees and shrubbery.
Okay. In, in the, in the photographs we have, we have four photographs, is that plus, is that shed where you're proposing to put something?
Yes, that, yep, that's the proposed shed.
Okay. Okay. So it's behind your wellhouse. Do we have piecometry on this? Oh, yeah. Thank you, Dee. Do you, do you even have to ask?
You already asked.
No. So this is gonna be, if you, I'm gonna put this on the upper left corner, near the upper left corner?
No. Uh, lower, lower corner.
If you look in from the street, the shed would be on the right-hand side.
No, Tom.
Yeah, behind your driveway.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Right above that keyhole looking thing in the ground.
Yeah. No.
Well, I mean.
I, I'm, I see a cursor moving. Is that where someone's trying to tell us, or is that just?
That's me, and we're talking about.
The shed would be down.
No, that's our, where the cursor is right now, that is where our septic system is.
Yeah, the shed would be diagonally.
On this side?
Yep. Back, Dee, towards the bottom.
Going back.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Well, down the driveway, right?
Keep going.
Further back.
On the other side of that tree.
Yeah. Nope.
Right there.
Okay. So, if I could, I don't know if Dee can answer this or Nicole, whatever. So between your house and the next house above you, it looks like there's a driveway entrance or an entrance into a lot, another lot.
Uh, so that is covered. Yes, so that is all trees and shrubbery in between our, our lots. And behind our lot, you see the 49 dash 3, that is about, I've looked it up, I think it's about like 12 acres.
Right. Normally, they, they leave the 50-foot wide gap, like what is between you and the house next door for a future right-of-way to be able to come in there if they ever decide to build on that large lot. And if you look at that entire lot, Pete, on the zone, on the assesses map, there's actually two 50-foot future right-of-ways on that lot. There's another one, two houses, as though they planned to go in and back out when they, when they divided those lots off.
Sure, okay. And although this doesn't really pertain, I guess, to this proposal, what is that keyhole looking thing in back of your house? And although this doesn't really pertain, I guess, to this proposal, what is that keyhole looking thing in back of your house? Yeah, right there on the, under the cursor.
Uh, that's a fire pit.
Okay. Oh, okay, cool. We're putting one in this summer too. Very cool, okay. So obviously, that would preclude the location of that would preclude putting that. Shed, you know, in that area. So. Okay, I see. Anybody have any, uh, board members have any questions or comments?
No, let's walk through the five.
Okay, so Nicole, can we go through the variance criteria with you? Your application, okay. Proposed variances and contrary to the public interest. This will be within, so it's within your property and it won't be visible to the public from street view, true. Um. Might be vis- visible to, if that other property is ever developed in a driveway or something, or road goes in there. But, um. That's for the future. And you're, the next neighbor above you probably wouldn't even see it because of the trees.
Correct.
The, the spirit and intent of the ordinance is preserved. All right. Would you read through that?
Nicole, do you have a copy of your application there?
Uh, not in front of me at the moment.
I'll just read it. I'll just read it. How's that?
I can read it if you want me to, too.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Dee, you're gonna be our Nicole standard.
Okay. The spirit and intent of the ordinance is preserved because the storage shed may not be a permanent structure. It will not obstruct view of public or rebutters and will not be considered unsightly.
Okay. Three?
There is substantial justice in granting the variance because our lot is narrow. By following twenty-five foot side setback guidelines would place the storage shed in the middle of the lot. This would decrease property value and become an unsightly view.
Okay.
Values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because the storage shed will be placed near the side property line. That has no living dwelling visible next to it and it will be fifty percent surrounded by vegetation.
Okay.
Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because the storage shed would be in the middle of our backyard. It would obstruct our view and would look unsightly.
And it might be too close to that fire pit as well. By the way.
I have a question.
Go.
Um, it says it may not be a permanent structure. Is there a possibility that it may be or is he, are you pretty, pretty set on the plastic type shed?
Uh, yes, it, it, it won't be a permanent structure. Um, we, we're planning on digging out the, the yard a little bit just so that it's, it's on a level surface. Like either crushed stones or, or, um. Block, cement blocks.
Okay.
Um, but. I mean, in that sense, yes, it could be moved, not that we want it to be moved.
Sure. Really, you know, asking for a variance, which if we grant this variance, it can stay there forever. Whether or not you decide to leave it there forever is always up to you.
Perfect.
Okay, um, any other questions? Z B A people?
No.
Okay, did we, we have anybody speaking or any emails speaking in favor of this?
I have no emails in this one and I see no raised hands.
Okay, do we have any emails or anybody who wants to speak against this?
I have nothing.
Okay, um, any final comments, uh, Nicole, or any other final comment or questions from the board?
Uh, no, no, thank you.
Okay. In that case, I'm gonna call this hearing to a close. We'll go on to deliberative on this. So we won't be able to take any more comments from anyone. Um. Somebody want to make a motion? Someone, anyone?
I'll make the motion. I move to grant the request, Nicole Preventer, for a variance from Article Five, Section two twenty, dash thirty-two I dot A. To allow a shed to be built within six feet from, from the side property line. The subject property is located at thirty-three Forest Street, Tax Map forty-nine, Lot five.
I'll second.
Thank you both. That was John second again?
No.
I thought it was Dan.
Yep.
It was Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Geez, you guys sound alike.
I was watching that time.
Sadly, I wasn't. I was just going by voice. What I perceived was voice.
I know that bark.
I, I would just say that with this fifty-foot buffer. And all of the foliage and coverage she has, I, I don't see any problem with this one. Quite honestly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm of a like mind of that.
Yeah, I, I concur.
Agree.
Go to vote.
Well, let's go, let's go through the variance criteria. It's not contrary to the public interest. Yeah, clearly, it's, it's not gonna be visible from the public or, um, via butter on that side, actually, because of the tree, the foliage. Uh, spirit and intent of the ordinance is preserved. Um. Yeah, it doesn't obstruct views, uh, of public or rebutters. Um. It's probably the best place on their property to put this thing. To be honest. There's substantial justice in granting, yeah, because, you know, if we said no, there's, the public doesn't have any gain at all by saying no to this. The public will, doesn't see this or be totally unaware of it. So. Values of surrounding properties won't be diminished, uh, certainly not. Um. Again, it's, it's at least fifty or sixty feet from any, any other house. Um, won't be visible from the street, yeah. Literal enforcement of the provision would result in unnecessary hardship. I, I think it would, you know, these are pretty narrow lots and I think she's right that, uh. Um, it, it would severely limit their ability to put even a small shed like this in. Is, is my view. Does anybody want to discuss this or should we just go ahead and vote?
When you think about it, the zoning is for a hundred ten thousand and the lots are only fourteen thousand. So the setbacks were obviously planned for a much larger property.
Yes.
They can't even begin to meet those setbacks.
Indeed. Indeed, okay, um, let's go on to a vote then. Dee, would you call it?
Gary Ingham?
Yes.
Jim Unger?
Yes.
Peter Bielow?
Yes.
Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
Jonathan Gifford?
Yes.
If one more item for you this evening, gentlemen, and that is a letter from the, um, so, uh, from the planning board. It's, uh, from Planning Director John Cashel, Dear Zoning Board of Adjustment. At their July fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting, the Plasto Planning Board accepted as complete an application for an amended site plan. For the above noted property, which is eighty-eight Plasto Road. Um, this is regarding their May two thousand nineteen use variance. Information was provided to the board regarding a variance that was granted by the zoning board of adjustment to permit a self-storage unit on this parcel. The variance was granted by the Z B A on May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. There were discussion at the planning board meeting as to the intent of the Z B A's decision regarding the self-storage use on the property. Review of the Z B A minutes showed that the discussion centered around the use being located at the rear of the parcel. The current proposal that, the current proposal shows that use at the rear of the parcel as well as replacing the retail use at the front of the parcel. The planning board has received a copy of the Z B A's notice of decision that cites that there were no conditions placed on the approval. And the minutes reflect the same. However, the planning board is looking for clarification if it was the intent of the Z B A to restrict the self-storage use to the rear of the parcel only. The planning board will continue the review of this application at their August nineteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Your response would be appreciated and time to be included at that meeting.
Well, my thought on this is, just to start off the discussion, folks, is I think we, you know, this is, this is a year plus ago. And we can't rehear this. There has to be some kind of, you know. Certainty in, in, uh, variances we offer or, or any other judgments we make. And, and asking a year plus afterwards for us to really look at that is, um, problematic, I think. My suggestion is that we, uh, we just send them another copy. We send them a copy of, um. Um. Of our, what we determined our vote at that.
A notice of decision.
That decision of that meeting and explicitly note that we did not put any conditions on it. Um, although I do want to say that this isn't a, you know, thinking, rehearing this letter isn't a bad thing. Uh, it does give us the opportunity to, just to. Kind of remember, if you will, that we can put conditions on, on, uh, decisions we make, uh, as we did tonight. Putting, uh, putting gutters up on that garage. Okay. Um. I don't know if we need to do it more often than we do, but, um, we don't do it terribly often, um. Um, my son just walked in and he just walked out. He is not part of this. I just want to be open and honest. Um. So, um. So it was not bad kind of getting reminded about our ability to do that by this letter. But I don't think we really are in any kind of reasonable position to, to rehear it or to give reasons why we did it or anything. I think they just really need to see our decision and that there were no conditions. What do you folks think?
I agree. We didn't put any conditions on it when we voted on it in, in the past. There wasn't. I, I can recall that meeting and I remember we talked to them about lighting because we wanted not have intrusion lighting in that area. But other than that, that, that was the only concerns that, that we had, but we never implemented them.
So, yeah, because we talked, we did. We talked about lighting. We talked about runoff. Um, but, but that was, that was it and they basically answered all our questions back then.
And we granted it.
Yes.
Unconditionally, okay. So I think that's all the planning board really needs to hear from us. So.
So is the board directing me to compose such a letter? A response, rather?
I would say the board is asking you to be so kind as to craft a letter to that, if that Dee. Um, and if the board is okay with it, I'll review it before she sends it out.
Yeah, that's fine. Absolutely.
Okay, Dee, you okay with that?
Yes.
Not trying to imply that you can't write a letter and sort of make sure it's.
No, that would be the proper way to do it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh. Other than that, gentlemen, I have nothing else for you.
Okay, then, um, let's call this meeting to a close. Thank you again, everybody, for, uh, for joining us tonight. Thank you applicants for bearing with us, especially Nicole, uh, out there. Um. But we, uh, we managed to muddle through again. Um, have a good, have a good evening and, uh, have a good weekend, folks.
Dean, can you take us up there?
Nice.